Call a meeting to order September seventeenth, two thousand twenty, Board of Education Public Hearing to go over the budget, the annual budget. I see, oh, I'm sorry, this is an official board meeting, not a meeting, I'm sorry. So roll call?
Okay, one second, we're having some tech issues here.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, 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 not your fault, we're working it out.
Can you guys all hear me?
I hear you.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chamberlain?
Here.
Ms. Kylan Wosick?
Here.
Ms. Knutson-Strack? Ms. Knutson-Strack? Mr. Reynoso?
Here.
Mr. Sloan?
Here.
Mr. Nurgi?
Yes.
Ms. Westphal? Okay.
So Douglas, are you going to provide an overview of the Finance Committee's work for the year?
Yeah, so, um, so yeah, so I'm sorry Kathleen, Abe's gonna go over at a high level, I'm gonna put some bullet points on there, and then, and I'm sorry, aren't we supposed to say the Pledge of Allegiance too because it's an official board meeting?
We're gonna do that next, I've got that on the agenda for the official board meeting. We can do it now, but why don't we, well, we keep with the flow and...
Okay, fine. Fair enough.
Give the overview.
Yeah, so Abe, you want to give the overview, please?
Yes, thank you, let me share my screen. Everyone see that? Yes?
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, good evening, everyone, welcome to our two thousand twenty, twenty-one Public Budget Hearing, this is bringing us towards the end of a process that started back in January. I'd like to thank the Business Office staff, as was the Board of Education, for their feedback and input in preparing this budget. A quick summary, so we may frame this hearing for public comment, there are total revenues of sixty-nine million, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars, expenditures of seventy-six million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars, factoring all funds including capital projects, a deficit of six million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. This is due to the timing of the working cash bonds that are issued and the lag in that the projects are going to be expensed this year, the Board is aware that that included North's paving project as well as Central's HVAC project. Notwithstanding that, we still have a positive expense-to-revenue ratio as defined by our AFR Financial Profile Score, revenue minus expenses do contribute to our overall fund balances, based upon our last AFR, we were at just over four and a half months, thirty-eight point nine percent. It's important to remember the interest earned from fund balance is a source of necessary operational revenue in order to balance our expenses, this amounted to nine hundred and two thousand dollars in interest earned from our fund balances, a very important component of our revenue. Also, any given year's fund balance may be affected by the timing of revenues and expenses such as unplanned emergency facility projects, delayed state payments, which has happened in the past, it's been delayed as well as prorated in the past, and it is a high probability that that could happen again, given the lack of state revenues. And the third element is the delayed in local tax payments, just this year, this has impacted us by two million dollars. The budget also includes one point three, three million dollars in abatement to taxpayers as part of the property tax relief grant for a third year, the total tax relief will be five point five seven three million dollars over these three years to taxpayers. This budget affords the district the necessary PPE, operational modifications to transition phases from remote to hybrid to in-person this school year. The process of projecting the budget needs of the district is, it's a continual process that is updated as information changes, and it has since we started last January. And with that, I would like to open this hearing for public comment.
Okay, so what we typically do at this time, Douglas, did you have any comments?
Yeah, I did actually.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Abe, can you pull down your screen just for a second, please?
Sure.
Sorry, thank you Kathleen, I'm sorry I didn't...
It's okay.
Had a time. So just some general comments and not, I mean, if the Board members want to discuss, that's fine. So we looked at the average fund balances for ten of their Lake County districts, and although we're about thirty-eight percent, thirty-eight point nine percent, the ten of the Lake County just high schools are at about seventy-seven percent. In order to get the full, full credit in this indicator on the AFR, we must have at least of a fund balance of twenty-five percent, and that's about three months of our, of our operations. Timing issues, if any year, a fund balance may be affected by the, the timing of the revenues and expenditures for many reasons, including unplanned emergencies, facilities, projects, delayed state payments, delayed tax revenue that Abe mentioned, of about two million dollars of this year. The last two bullet points are very important to remember about the fund balance, the district's credit rating, as determined by Moody's or Standards and Coors, is impacted by the fund balance and potentially increase both the need of short-term borrowing and the interest rate paid on that debt. And the interest earned is a source of necessary, so the interest earned on that fund balance is a source of net, net necessary operational revenue to offset expenses, so it was not nine hundred and two thousand dollars per two thousand nineteen AFR. So those are just some general comments, so that's all I have for now.
Thank you Douglas, and thank you Abe, I will officially open the meeting up to public participation at this time, as is our practice, each person has three, participant has three minutes to speak, and what we ask that you provide your name so that we can follow up with you, Michael, could you check to see if we have any participants here this evening?
We may, yes, there are a few visitors, but I do not know if they wish to speak.
Okay. See? How would they normally indicate to you?
Yeah, I suppose, I mean, I suppose it would be first come, first served, we'll, if somebody wants to start, I'll, I'll manage it from here.
Okay. So as, at this point, what we can do is, we are going to leave the meeting open until seven o'clock, in case anyone comes along who wants to speak, they can raise the thumbs up button if they want to speak, and Michael, you will, you will give them the floor, unmute them so they have an opportunity to participate, we want to hear what they have to say, and I will come back every minute or so to remind everyone to, they have an opportunity to speak. So with that, I guess, Michael, you and I will, will wait and people can breathe a little bit. I have seven o'clock at this time, at this point, I would like to bring public participation to a close, and I would also, it's time for us to adjourn, I move, we adjourn our public meeting, all in favor, say aye. Board members?
Aye.
Aye.
Two?
Aye.
Three? Four? Alrighty, all of you say aye, against nay, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone, that was a long few minutes, so thank you, everyone, for your patience. If everyone's okay, we're gonna jump right into our next board meeting, I see Erin is good, Hal?
Ready to go.
You're good, you're ready to go, Jay, everyone, alrighty, okay. Good evening, everyone, I would like to call our September seventeenth Board of Education Meeting to order, roll call, vote please, Jenny.
Mr. Chamberlain? Mr. Chamberlain? Mrs. Conlon-Wosick?
Here.
Mrs. Knutson-Strack? Mr. Nurgi?
Yes. Here.
Mr. Reynoso?
Here.
Mr. Sloan?
Here.
Ms. Westphal?
Here.
Okay, we now have a quorum, and we move on to item three, the Pledge of Allegiance, repeat, repeat after me, or say quietly, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America."
What did it end up?
And to the republic for which it stands.
The republic for which it stands.
Thank you, Hal. One nation under God.
One nation under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
But...
Liberty, justice for all.
Alrighty, we're going to move on to item four, approval of agenda, board action is requested, I move the Board of Education approve the September seventeenth, two thousand twenty board meeting agenda as presented, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Hearing none, this is a voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Against nay, motion carries, okay, we're moving along, consent agenda, board action is requested, I move the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as follows, Board of Education meeting minutes, payment of bills, board policy adoption, treasures report, and personnel recommendations as presented, I need a second. Thank you, is there any discussion? Roll call, vote please, Jenny.
Mr. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mrs. Conlon-Wosick?
Yes.
Mrs. Knutson-Strack?
Yes.
Mr. Nurgi?
Yes.
Mr. Reynoso?
Yes.
Mr. Sloan?
Yes.
Ms. Westphal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, motion carries, moving along to board reports, does anyone have any good news, board members, information, things that they'd like to bring up?
I, I do.
Okay.
I, and I'm sure that Michael will go over this in his report, but the open house that we had last week was, what was it, last week? I get confused when it was, but if, you know, all the, the teachers did a wonderful job with the videos and the Zoom calls, very informative, all, there was a, there was a common thread with all the teachers, they obviously did their homework, and I was very, very impressed, so, so, nice job to, to, to the staff.
Wonderful, that's great news, any more great news?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second what Douglas just said, it was, I participated in that as well, and it was really, really good, I've always enjoyed that because it feels like back to school for myself, running around and saying hi to all the neighbors, but it was very, I, I thought that interacting with the teachers was very similar to how it is in school, it was just very, very personalized and very, very well done, and I did get to see some of my neighbors just on Zoom, so it was, it was very well done, good job.
Any other thoughts? As I wander around the neighborhood, people that I, that her children are at the school are all very happy, and surprisingly, I keep thinking I'm gonna meet someone that's not, but so far, so good, people are very appreciative of the work that the teachers are doing, the administration's doing, and I feel very fortunate that I, I get to hear so much good news, I know that the administration doesn't always get to hear that, but, but yeah, so, yeah, thank you, thank you very much. I, I do have two, two little things to mention, one of them is that Dean Langdon asked us if our board would like to speak at a webinar on board governance, excellence in board governance, he said we were the first board in the state that he thought of calling, I was, to say that I was tickled is an understatement, so, but I think it's a reflection of all the great work that you do, and also, I, I think Jenny's outstanding report to ISP had something to do with it as well, and it was signed off by Michael, I had a little role in it, but I have a funny feeling that Jenny is representing us very well down there, I hope she hasn't overrepresented us, so, but anyway, so, next Thursday, we'll have an opportunity to be at that webinar and to be represented with the, with other outstanding school boards, and I think from the work that I've seen from everyone this year and how everyone's pulled together, you guys have all been outstanding and easy to work with during a really difficult time, so I think it was well spotted on their part. The, oh, Ed Redd, oh, I think Michael and I will talk about that a little bit later, that's it for me, anyone else, Jonathan, you're quiet, Russell, Hal, okay, well, I guess that's it for board reports tonight, the superintendent's report, Michael, take it away.
Great, so, thank you very much, so for recognition and good news, yeah, the open house is, well, first of all, in terms of recognition and good news, we have Keegan with us, and we have Charlie with us, and they're gonna give us their, you know, hopefully introduce themselves to us during their report, so let's everybody wave to Keegan and Charlie, our student board representatives, hi guys, so we'll hear for more from, more from those gentlemen in a moment, but as far as open house, that's a really good kind of opportunity, maybe for me to kick it to Dan and Jim, just to really quickly, you know, give us their impressions, they didn't know I was gonna ask them to do this, so, giving them a little time to think, but just give us some impressions, kind of how that went, that process, what was the process like? If you don't mind, that'd be awesome.
So obviously...
You know, in the COVID situation, we had to change up our normal plan, we would have loved to have all the community members and the, and the parents and the teachers in the buildings, but we needed to pivot, so what we asked the teachers to do was either create a video that would explain what the course is about and how their students engage in the learning, or to set up a Zoom and, and have direct conversations with the parents as they came into the classes, and, you know, I watched probably twenty-five of the YouTube links, and I was impressed with what they were able to come up with, I thought it went well, too.
Yeah, North did something similar in that we asked teachers to create pre-recorded videos or offer live Zoom calls, again, the purpose of open houses, several of you have already stated this, to make sure that we can have parents have a connection with our teachers and what their students might experience within their courses, we did it a little differently in that we opened it up and just didn't focus on one night, we allowed the staff to go throughout the week so that parents could have the flexibility to get on, on a variety of days. Selfishly speaking, I had a real opportunity to see some firsthand, as I am a parent of a freshman, and I will echo what everybody said, teachers were absolutely outstanding, I think did a fantastic job in connecting us at home with them in the classroom, so all good stuff, thank you.
Great, thank you, gentlemen, yeah, that's, you know, that's an example of kind of what's, we've all been going through this year, you know, things that we kind of have down, open house, everything has to be rethought, you know, and just re, redesigned for this, this environment, and so that's an opening for innovation, so before this is all over, we'll see more of that one way or another, but, you know, just generally, you kind of heard Dan and Jim, they had very similar goals, similar focuses, but they, you know, had their own little different spin on it per building, so you may see more of that, you know, don't want to squash innovation, we want to just make sure, in this case, certainly the parents had opportunity to interact with teachers and that, but anyway, so thanks very much, gentlemen, that was great. What I would like to do, and I'm, I've got a bunch of tabs open, give me one second, I, I would like to talk a little bit about, or give an update on COVID and remote learning and kind of our plans, sort of where we are at in the process, and that'll lead into district goals as well, so give me one moment to make sure I have all my tabs where they need to be. All right. Sorry, I've got two screens and one of them is like an eighty-three inch screen, and I'm not that coordinated, okay. There we go, I think we're ready, okay, so, as I say, I'd like to give the board and anybody who's in on this meeting, an update on where we're sort of at with remote learning, kind of where we think we're going. Like to review our original return to learn plan, which, as I'm sure you remember, we presented at the end of July, and now it is mid-September, it seems like years ago, we'll up, give you an update on the original plan, we'll talk about current metrics, current health metrics that we're looking at in the area, in terms of, we've been working with the Lake County Department of Health, they've been very, very helpful to all the superintendents in the area, to give us a sense of what metrics we should be looking at, you know, what numbers we should be looking at and what the, you know, acceptable numbers are for remote, you know, remote learning, hybrid learning, in-person learning, we'll go through that. Then we'll talk about our task force and the board, we kind of mentioned that at the committee, committee meetings, and that's sort of our next step, and we'll, we'll talk about that in a second. So, as you remember, the original plan was approved on July thirtieth, and these are sort of the highlights, phase one, which were, we, we started the year in remote learning, and we did, the plan that was approved by the board was remote learning plus extracurriculars and sports, and the idea with that would be, we would start August twentieth through September fourth. Phase two would be, would have been remote learning, but then, and extracurriculars and sports, continue with that, and then we tried to bring in select groups during the day, all right, and originally, the plan was from September eighth through roughly the end of quarter one, so this is kind of the period we're in right now. Our timeline has moved back just a little bit, and I'll try to explain that as I go. And then phase three would have been, if all went well, remote learning plus an in-person hybrid, and we presented a model of sort of a thirty-three percent, third of the students in the building on Tuesday, third Wednesday, third Thursday, and Monday and Wednes, excuse me, Monday and Friday would be remote learning, still having extracurriculars in sports to the degree in which we are allowed to do by AHSA and the State Board of Education, so just a reminder there, and again, that would have been ideally the start of quarter two-ish on October nineteenth through the end of the semester, or for however long we could do that, unless we were able to come back fully in person. So I want to give you a little bit of update on phase one, so I can get myself ready here. So, remote learning has been as complex as we thought, probably more, more so, it has taken tremendous amounts of time to work out the technology, the logistical, the instructional issues, and we're still working on it, it is constantly a work in progress, what we found is, everything just takes longer, you know, it takes longer in terms of instruction, it takes longer in terms of making decisions, because every single thing we've got to do, we have to rethink it, for example, open house, that's a big one, even smaller decisions we have to make, everything has to be rethought, so it just takes, it just takes a little bit longer, this is a very complex process in terms of, you know, having all of our students at home, making sure all of our students have equitable access to technology, communication is as clear as we can make it, and again, we're still constantly working on those things, extracurriculars, extracurriculars currently had the option, or excuse me, in phase one, when we first started the year, had the option to meet remotely, not yet onsite, so some extracurricular clubs and activities were meeting via Zoom, athletics have been meeting after school mostly, and based on the return to activities guidelines and the fall contact guidelines, which, the link is there, and I can give you the copy of the presentation. So, please note, we have a great deal of local control from the state regarding instruction, all right, it's not the case with athletics, I just want to remind the board, we are limited as to what sports can compete, which sports can practice, how long they can practice, the number of contact days athletes can have with coaches, all of that, all of this is a really significant challenge for athletic directors, and I'm gonna throw them a shout out here, so it's not just figuring out what sports can do what and where, it's actually the tracking of COVID cases and any potential COVID cases, so with athletics, we have literally hundreds of students at each building, in and around each building after school, at my last check, I believe we only had, I believe, two positive COVID cases, and we're reasonably certain those cases didn't originate here, that being said, with only two cases, there are dozens and dozens of students and coaches who are doing what they're supposed to be doing, they're reporting if they may have symptoms, or if they're in close contact with somebody who's tested positive, all of that has to be tracked, all of that has to be reported to the Lake County Department of Health, all of that, we have to keep track of dates, and is this person quarantining, can we get a doctor's note, it's a very complex process, so again, even though the vast, vast majority of those situations thankfully did not result in a positive case, Brian Mo and Tina Woolard have significant tracking duties, so I want to thank them, our athletic directors, Brian and Tina, our trainers, Caitlin and Glenn, all the coaches, because they're the ones on the front lines, they're the ones working with students, making sure everything's being done the way it should be done, and certainly our students and our parents, right, because they, it doesn't work if, you know, our, our students and their, their families aren't taking this seriously when they're not around the building, so I want to thank them, too, so certainly, all of our return to learn plans are impacted by this work, we're learning a lot from athletics and, and how to do school safely, again, much of it is outside, but not all of it. So, phase two, that would have been, again, that's kind of what we're in now, remote learning, extracurriculars and sports, and then, we were talking about bringing in select groups in during the day. Because of the complexity of this remote learning model, you know, our timeline is slightly delayed, again, everything takes a lot longer, in other words, we did not start activities, bringing, you know, students in, on September eighth, right on that date, instead, this is starting to happen now, so extracurriculars will be happening on campus, or they have the option to meet on campus with transportation provided, and all activities are going to be coordinated through our activities coordinator, Molly Tomlinson, so we can ensure safety, we know we're, you know, separating appropriately, people are doing self-certification and temp checks, and, you know, we, we are putting groups in spaces, and we're making sure we have appropriate available spaces and they're spread out correctly, so taking all the precautions for that, but again, it's, it's one more step to bringing students back into the building. Furthermore, we are looking at homecoming events, and it's obviously going to be a little bit different this year, it'll be some remote activities and some in-person activities, I'd like to fill you in on, obviously, we can't really have a dance, not a parade, sadly, but there are some virtual activities that our activities director is looking at and working with student council on, but the buildings are, I'm gonna let the board know, are looking at a drive-in movie at both campuses in the parking lots, both buildings are working on plans that have submitted plans to me, but to ensure safety, to ensure social distancing, facilities usage, and I don't know the movie yet, no, I keep asking, but I, I'm very confident that's, those are gonna be great events, and we're going to be able to do it safely according to Health Department guidelines. As far as bringing in select groups of students, sorry, I'm a little behind on my bullet points, sorry about that, as far as the select groups of students, we are in the midst of planning for those groups right now, so, the first big group of students, I think, that we'll see in our buildings, our Career Technical Education Department, CTE, are gonna be offering students opportunities to come into the buildings in small groups for hands-on activities, as you can imagine, woodworking, metals, small engines, a class called Mobile Makers, which is actually a programming class, but it needs, they need standalone Macintosh computers, we can't give the students to take home, they'll be coming in, so again, they are gonna start to come in the week of September twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, again, small groups, social distancing, so we're, we're looking forward to that, again, that's another step toward getting students back in buildings and learning from that, just as we're learning from athletics. In addition, we are also looking at special ed evaluations being onsite, occupational therapy, physical therapy might start as early as next week, in addition, we're working on plans to bring in certain groups of students who have demonstrated some significant needs, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves on that, so I can't give... I don't want to get ahead of ourselves on that, so I can't give too many details. Still a work in progress, but it is absolutely in progress. I also want to mention, the SAT is happening. We talked about that at our building, or excuse me, our committee meetings last week. And that's happening next week. The logistics on that are absolutely staggering, more so than our normal SAT administrations, as you can imagine. Because we can't do a full, you know, gym of 300 kids. So we've got to break them up into small groups and small rooms and obviously, of course, making sure we're being careful with masking and social distancing and things like that. So our building teams and Barb George and Jeff Shaggerin are doing an amazing job. We are it, finding enough proctors is going to be tricky. I'm, you know, many administrators that you see around, around the room tonight are going to be helping out, including myself. It's an all-hands-on-deck kind of thing. So, but again, we are going to learn quite a bit about bringing people back into school, bringing people back in safely and making sure our staff feels good about that. Okay, phase three, which is, we're not there yet. Again, that would have been our a third, a third, a third hybrid model plus extracurriculars and sports. Originally, it was planned for the start of quarter two, which would have been on 10/19, the end of the semester. So right now, we're working on that. We're taking steps at bringing students back. Definitely monitoring the health situation in the community and I'll talk about that in a moment. We are working with our staff right now and just as any school in the area, we have, you know, staff who have specific medical concerns for themselves or loved ones. And childcare issues, which need to be worked through. So we've, you know, just sent out a new survey to staff to gain a sense of their level of concern and their issues so we can try to address those. Or help them address those. So again, data is still coming in, but like I say, this is very similar to what we're seeing from other districts as well. So given our current situation, where we're at right now in terms of the process and moving it forward, we don't think implementing our one-third hybrid on October 19th, even if everything went well, it's probably not going to be possible on that date. Again, when we gave those dates of early October, I said October 1st-ish to try to make a decision in order to give the staff enough time to prepare and get ready and make a switch over from remote learning, which is a switch over in itself, to our hybrid plan, October 19th is probably really not going to be possible. Okay. So the reason I say that, one reason I say that is our task force, our return to learn task force, our next steps task force between District 46 and District 127 is going to be on Wednesday, September 30, 23rd, excuse me, that's next Wednesday, from 7:00 to 8:30 and Monday, October 5th. So just to give a sense of the timing, the calendar, Monday, October 5th would be the last meeting of that group. Again, the task force, we'll talk about this more in a second. The task force is not a decision-making body. It's really just to open the doors to discussion and understanding different stakeholders. The decision whether or not we go hybrid is to lay board a specific individual board decision, right? So District 46, District 127, we might do completely different things. We don't know. But again, we want to make sure the communication is there as solidly as possible. So anyway, for us, for this board, Monday, October 5th is the last day of that meeting where we would have theoretically all the information up to date as much as possible. We have committee meetings that Thursday on the 8th. I think that's probably the earliest we could actually make a decision. Excuse me. And then from there, we'd have to kind of figure out the timeline, again, giving people enough time to plan, to do. There's a whole bunch of logistical considerations shifting over from remote to hybrid. So anyway, that's where we're at with phase three. All right. So I would like to go into some of the numbers, some of the health metrics pretty close to real time as we're going to get. So this is just a screenshot and I'm going to pop out to a website that I've been building out that just kind of helps me keep things in one central location and I'm going to open it up live. And I'll explain what this is all about. Okay. So this is an attempt to kind of put together a dashboard and this right now is just strictly internal, but I will be happy to share it with you. So let me start with these bottom three rows. We've been working with the Lake County Department of Health, as I had mentioned, and they are working on helping us identify metrics that would assist schools in deciding, you know, how safe is it to bring people back into the school? So one of the first, most important numbers that they mentioned is a seven-day average incidence rate. And what that means is the number of new cases in the county per 100,000 residents. Again, I'll talk about that in a second. They've been helping us put together dashboards. They've been putting together websites where we can actually look these numbers up by zip code. So it gets a little bit confusing with all the data that's out there right now. It's not always quite reported in the same way. So sometimes you look at region and for our region, it's McHenry County and Lake County. Okay. Or sometimes they just look strictly at county on some of these websites. What we asked the Lake County Department of Health is, that's great, you know, but this is a big county. What I'd like to do is look a little bit more localized. And what we want to do is be able to look at zip codes. So really kind of zero in on our community. And there are three zip codes that take up about 99% of all the, our enrolled students. 60030, that's Gray's Lake, 60046 is Lake Villa and 60073 is Round Lake. It's about 50%, 30%, excuse me, 50%, 20% and 30% respectively. So right now, the data that I pulled today, as best as I can tell, is we're at 8.8 new cases per 100,000. And if you kind of look at the columns now, and for these bottom three rows, this comes from the Lake County Department of Health. If that, if this number is consistently, not on just one day or, you know, one, one measurement, it has to be over a little bit of time, a couple of weeks at least. Right now, we're in the hybrid range. Okay. So what they say is anything in this range, if we have all of our metrics green, so to speak, it might be safe to come back in person. If we're in here, these are all and statements. This should be true, and this should be true, and this should be true at least. We could be in the hybrid range. And that, again, they're not, they don't know what our hybrid plan was. Ours is very specific. This just means some learning can occur in person based on prioritized risk. Well, frankly, we are already in a hybrid model right now. We have students who are coming into the buildings. Some learning can occur in person. And again, we're trying to ramp that up slowly and gradually. If those numbers get worse and worse, that's your sort of in this red zone, all virtual. So if we have a daily incidence rate greater than 14 per 100,000 or, well, we'll talk more about these other measures first. This one, I think, is one of the most important. Right now, and frankly, pretty consistently, we have been in this hybrid range. Lake County Department of Health also would like us to look at, or has a dashboard for us, for the COVID-19-like illnesses admissions into hospitals. So anybody who's admitted to a hospital that could possibly be considered COVID based on the symptoms, that's what they're tracking there. So again, that's a measure of our hospitals getting filled up. You know, are those ICU beds getting filled up? And another thing they wanted us to consider is diagnostic testing turnaround time. In other words, if, if people are getting tested and the average length of time it takes to get a result is somewhere in the two-week range as it was earlier in the summer, that's no good. It's almost useless, right? They can't do any contact tracing, anything with that. It's got to be a very short turnaround time to be effective. So in-person learning, for this metric, if it's less than three days, that's, that's a good indicator. Between three and 10 is hybrid and virtual is greater than 10. It's been two days on average for quite a long time. So that's where we're at right now. And I'll dig into these numbers a little bit more in a second. What we also want to add is this idea of positivity rate. And I think if you've been paying attention to the news, when they start talking about COVID and states and communities and things like that, you hear this positivity rate being used quite a bit. And again, that's the, for the number of tests administered in a particular day, for example, what percent are positive? Right? So what percent of people are coming up positive when they're being tested? And again, very similar to this, we're looking at zip codes. We're looking at, we could look at region, McHenry and Lake, we could look at county. Really want to look at our localized data on this. All right. And right now, at this moment, according to my calculations, that's seven, this is a seven-day average, as is this, sorry, is at 5%. And this is the lowest it's been in quite a while and I'll show you kind of what I'm looking at here. So what I'm going to do is jump out to a, to actually show you the data historically, kind of where we have been. And that looks like a mess, but I'll try to explain. So this is the positivity rate that I check every day. I'm in the data every day and just for those three zip codes, putting together the average, the positivity rate per day and then calculating the seven-day average. These are all seven-day averages, right? So when I started, it was right around seven, it'd pop up. It's kind of ping-ponging all over the place, as high as 7.62. It's kind of getting up to 7.81. Couple of days ago, it was above eight. That's not good, but it didn't stay there, right? And it came down pretty significantly over the last couple of days, popped up a little bit. Don't know. We're just checking the trends. But what I want you guys to notice is, for the most part, we'll see where it's going here. I don't think we've gotten, you know, there's a possibly a predicted surge from Labor Day, the Labor Day holiday. Haven't seen that yet. Still a little bit early, so we'll see. But for the most part, this has been pretty steady, even though it looks like it's bopping around a lot. It's been between five and eight, five and eight, five and eight. It's in that hybrid range pretty consistently. So we'll see where it goes from here. And again, for us to feel better about, you know, bringing more and more students back, this has got to get a lot lower and it's got to stay a lot lower. All right. So I've embedded, this is from the Lake County Department of Health. This is their dashboard and I'm able to throw this on the website. So the blue scattergram or the blue dot chart there or whatever it's called, that's the county, so Lake County. And again, this is the same three zip codes I had mentioned and you can just look, you can just come in here and it's available publicly. You want to look at any zip code, you can see it. And I have highlighted 6030, 46 and 73. And you can hover over that. So here's where the data gets a little interesting on this. For some reason, anywhere else I've seen this, this number reported, it's per 100,000. Why they're giving it as 10,000, I don't know, but I'm a formal math guy. I can move a decimal. So looking at this one, as of right now, and it looks like they've updated it, it's 0.9, which is 9, 9.0. And again, if you remember those, that those ranges, again, that's right in the hybrid range. But what's important also is to kind of look at trends, you know, right here. Between May and June, it was way up there. All right. So 28.5, that's rough. Everybody did the work, did what they're supposed to do, knocked it down. It's popping up again. But for the most part, it's kind of staying in that hybrid range. All right. And I'm going to scroll down. This is another one. This is again, from the county. This is the county rate of the incidence rate. What I just showed you was the specific zip codes. So the county rate is actually quite a bit higher than our community. Interesting. If we look at the region, it's even higher than that because right now, McHenry County is having a bit of a, their rates are all a little bit higher than Lake County. Let's put it that way. All right. Here's the one, sort of that third row. The COVID-19-like illnesses and hospital admissions in Lake County. Good to know, good to have right now. I mean, this is, I, this is positive. Meaning it's good. We don't have a whole lot of hospital admissions for COVID-like illnesses. And the way to, according to Lake County Department of Health, you just want to see a preponderance of these numbers either stay in flat or going down. And they are definitely going down. And then finally, this is the average testing turnaround time in Lake County. And as I said, it's been at two for a while. So we've really, in Lake County, upped our testing capacity, which is a very good thing. Okay. Stop, stop, stop. Okay. So I'm going to get back here. All right. So we are monitoring these, these numbers. And like I say, for the most part, for me, these two numbers are really the ones we need to be looking at, right? We need to, that gives us a sense of the infection rate and how active the infection is in our area, specific to our zip codes, right? We're going to talk about this at our task force and kind of how to interpret these numbers and what our interpretation should be. So again, what I want to caution people is if those numbers, if those dots, for example, here goes down to, you know, 4.9 for a day, that's great. That's not enough to say, oh yeah, everybody back in person. We need to see that consistent. If you saw that, you saw that chart, it's popping all over the place. That blue graph, even though it dropped down, there is a trend line in there and that trend line is still increasing. So it is slightly increasing on average overall. Need to see that start to decrease, right? Same thing with the seven-day averaging incidence rate. Things are going in the right direction. Let's see how things go. Again, we've still got to kind of wait to see to make sure the Labor Day holiday doesn't trip us up a little bit. And then start to get into flu season. So we'll see, we'll see how that goes. Other numbers that we're looking at, and I don't have them on here yet because we've just started to conceive of how this will work. So we don't all, in order to open and open safely, it's not just
Guys, such a buffoon.
It's not just the health data. It's also personnel data. We have to know what our staff capacity is. So I've talked a little bit in previous meetings about people, if they're, of course, if they're come up with a positive test, they have to be removed and quarantined. If they're symptomatic, there are conditions under which people are quarantined or if they have close contact with somebody who's a positive case, would have to be quarantined, students as well. But in terms of staff, we have to know, like, do we have enough staff to actually have school, right? So we're looking at a measure in terms of stack, staff capacity. What, what's, you know, the minimum number of staff we can have in order to run our hybrid model specifically? Same thing with PPE availability. We've been stockpiling PPE. I think, Abe, I believe you told me we've got about two months. Like if we were full in person, we've got enough for about two full months, right? Hybrid, we would need less. But we were looking at a measure there just to make sure that if we start, if we start hybrid, we've got enough supplies and there aren't supply chain issues and things like that in order to continue and make sure everybody is in school safely. Okay. All right. Let me talk about our task force a little bit. So once again, it is September 23rd and October 5th from 7:00 to 8:30 PM. At this point, we're going to meet virtually. That'll be a discussion, you know? If, if we're talking about potentially opening schools to in-person, should our meetings be in-person? At this point, there's not enough time to kind of get that figured out. We'll discuss that with the group virtually at our first meeting. But it's going to be for both our districts, District 46, District 127. Invitations are going to start to go out tomorrow, I may have mentioned. Certified, so teacher, you know, could be a teacher or a counselor or a social worker. Certified and non-certified staff. So our, our support staff will be at both buildings identified or both buildings here at District 127 and for District 46. Parents, board members, members of administration. And I'm working on potentially students too. We'll see. Stay tuned on that one. The objectives of this group are to identify and contextualize the steps that are necessary to transition to in-person, to really just communicate all of the things that, you know, we're, as administrators, we are deeply involved in this stuff. Most people in the community don't know all this. So we want to make sure that communication is there and people understand what we're looking at. We want to examine and discuss the logistical considerations required to be conducted in person. Again, the steps necessary and all logistics, PPE, you know, the self-certification and furniture and hallway flow, all that kind of stuff that would be required for school to be conducted, conducted in person. It is significant. It can be done. It is significant though. But we need to make sure people understand that and have a good understanding. And also examine and discuss the Health Department guidelines, Health Department metrics, excuse me, for schools, what we just talked about here a little bit. So that's really it. As I say, it's not intended to be a decision-making body, but we just want to make sure that we have a good dialogue and we are hearing from parents and we're hearing from students. And here, you know, everybody is hearing from, you know, the representative groups in the community. That's what's going to make this work if we are all understanding the same, same metrics, same data, same procedures. Okay. So I'm going to move into district goals in a second, but I want to stop here. Are there any questions from the board?
Nicole?
Yes, Amy.
This is Amy. I think just one thing as you're going into the next steps, it's the dialing up and dialing down. So like I know just even locally, like the Gray's Lake Library had to close for three days, so they've been open to the public. But then they, they're now closed. But then they, they're now closed. So, you know, my mind goes to like, if we, when we reopen, you know, they don't have to deal with busing and children, they can, they can close, they can make an announcement, and then people are responsible for themselves. And it is different so, than a school. So other, other public entities have had to do the same. Highland Park Library yesterday closed. Deerfield Library today put out a notice that there was, they didn't have to close, but they had to put out a notice for someone who was at the library, not, not a staff member. The other two were staff members. So, so things like that, places that have opened and now are having to close very locally in our communities. Just thinking of that as we move forward, so.
Yeah, thank you. Definitely keeping track, keeping track of, of all of that, you know.
Yeah.
You know, our, you know, schools, our superintendent group is pretty tight. So we're all keeping track of each other, you know. Today I had a meeting with our partner schools, so Grayslake and Woodland and Milburn and Lake Villa. So we had a conversation about this. And then, you know, an hour later, I had a conversation or a meeting with all the high school superintendents. And again, all of our administration, administrators have their, their own, their own groups that they're keeping in contact with. So very, really keeping tabs on, you know, there are some, some districts that have started or a little further down than us, so we're going to learn from them. But also some of those entities, like you mentioned, like libraries and fill in the blank, you know. One thing I didn't mention about the Lake County Department of Health is, so any positive cases, we would be in contact with the Lake County Department of Health, and they log it, and, you know, we kind of do contact tracing within the school. Who might that positive person been in contact with? We hand that over to the Lake County Department of Health, and they do the full contact tracing, you know, process. They're calling people outside and just trying to figure out where, you know, where these outbreaks might be happening and who might be impacted. What they have said is, you know, we've asked them, so what, what does it take for a school, for example, to shut down? How do we know? It's not an exact science, you know, it depends on the situation. What they say is, if there is an outbreak, that's when, you know, the Department of Health will come and talk to us and work with us and decide, okay, you know, do we need to shut down for a while? So the obvious question is, what's an outbreak? What do you mean by that? And their definition, last I heard, was two. Two positive cases in any worksite. Now, that doesn't mean if there are two, that automatically shuts things down, then they would, that's a conversation. Like, okay, you have two or more positive cases. Again, is that happening inside the school, for example? Or is that outside and everything was handled correctly? So again, it's, it's going to be a process to decide if we do this, because I think your point, you know, I'm taking your point, is if we open, we want to stay open.
Exactly. And I'm not saying, not, I'm just saying, what are the, the amount of disruption? I, I understand that there's, there's disruption now. I'm not saying there isn't disruption. I, there's, there's a lot of complexity with all of this. But when, when there are pieces that are moving forward, just understanding if there, have to, have to consider that there's a likelihood that there would be a shutdown, then what does that look like? What, what are those steps and then, then what happens? So all those things are just in play, and I, I think, I might be just stating the obvious, but understanding that that is happening right now, even this week, in our own community, that, as we're having these discussions, so, yeah.
Point taken, yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, Michael, real quick. I'm sure this is going to be brought up. I do understand ANIAC's going back?
Yeah, they've started, I think they started last week, I believe.
Okay, so I'm sure this can be brought up, but I guess they're coming in once a week and then they're off two weeks or something like that? I'm not sure.
Yeah, they've got a little bit of a different model. So our third, third, third model was, you know, a third of the students on Tuesday, a different group of third, a different group of students on Wednesday, a different group of students on Thursday. Theirs is kind of a week-long model originally. So a third of the students would come, you know, for the week. I want to say it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, but don't quote me. But again, just to, to take an even slower step or even more gradual step, they made it kind of a sixth. So it's even fewer students in the classroom.
Well, my understanding is right away off the bat, the first week they did it, the students, some students, they're not, this isn't good. Either we're hybrid, because they come in for a week and they're off for two weeks, it's not really benefiting them at all. It's more confusion, and they're saying it's better to stay virtual and then go all back. This, this is what I've heard so far, so.
Yeah, I haven't, well, we will be visiting those sites, I'm sure, and I'll be in contact with Dr. McKay at 117 for sure, so.
Hey, Michael.
Yeah, Jay.
About absences and attendance in general, once we transition to our hybrid and then eventually our full in-person plan, have you gotten any direction from ISB or even anyone higher up than us about, is there going to be flexibility with attendance for students if they and their families are still uncomfortable to return, even if we're providing hybrid or in-person?
Yeah, you know, that's a really good point. I'm sorry, I didn't mention that. Our hybrid model is by choice. So students are, students and their families feel comfortable bringing their students back, great. If not, and we, I'm going to estimate we'll have about 15% of the popular, our student population who are not comfortable coming back. That, that seems to be the number in similar districts, but we'll see. But yeah, they would have the option to go full remote.
I'm sorry, ANIAC's got the same. They don't have to. Each student has a choice to stay virtual or come back. They have the choice, sorry.
Absolutely, yeah, thanks, Russ. Yeah, absolutely, we have to do that. We have students who are absolutely medically fragile, and we have to respect the wishes of those parents and offer an education to those students as well.
Michael has a couple of questions.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Douglas, I've already spoken.
No, that's all right, you can speak again. The KPIs that you outlined, Michael, I know that, that the Lake County Health Department, are they kind of driving those five KPIs? Or is that kind of a standard across the state of Illinois, across the nation?
Help me with KPIs. KPI?
Key performance indicators on the, on that chart that you had?
Yeah, yeah. They're helping us, based on the documentation, the model they came out with, the Lake County Department of Health provided metrics for those bottom three, and definitely helping us out as far as interpreting, and, you know, they're very available. I was emailing our contact today about a couple of things. But also the positivity rate, we talked to them about that, and that's still a viable indicator, according to them. But, you know, they're working not only, again, with their health professionals, you know, we're working with our partner schools out there. They're working with their partner health departments as well to try to come up with something that, you know, is meaningful for schools. So yes, that is something that they are, and all those cut scores between eight and 14 and things like that, that's pulled right from Lake County Department of Health. Does that answer your question? I'm not sure.
I'm kind of, is that coming from the state of Illinois too? Because, I mean, no offense, I, and I've seen a little bit, but no offense against Lake County, you know, Health Department, but until six months ago, there was not very active.
No, I think that's changed, that's changed.
I know it has, so.
Well, I'll, I'll say this, and this is strictly my opinion. Between the Lake County Department of Health and the Illinois Department of Public Health, I'm much more comfortable working with the Lake County.
Okay, I thought I went here. The other question was, is we were, we started, we okayed the high, possible hybrid model to go back in schools in the middle of October. Are those, you know, I know, I know we're having the task force and everything, and so have those logistics, is that still moving forward? I mean, do we have a plan?
Yeah, I mean, that's, the idea is, again, we're just looking at the metrics now. Those, the metrics that I just showed here are just kind of getting solidified now. We spent most of the summer kind of without any idea what we're supposed to be looking at or what the cuts were, right? So that's starting to be sort of an accepted model, excuse me. But again, I think our, our timeline is still on, it's shifted at least a couple of weeks, maybe more. But we're going to have to see. Again, we're going to have to see what the task force kind of discusses, how the health numbers look, you know, if they start to spike or start to, you know, really go down rapidly, that, that can change everything.
No, and I, I get the timeline, I'm sorry, let me restate it. So kind of logistics behind it. So if we're having people and kids in one time a week, you guys have pretty much nailed down since, you've had since July, right? To nail down high, you know, hallways and flow patterns and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that's, that's fine.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Douglas.
I have a question that's, I mean, it's attendance, but it's the other side is, you know, are we, how engaged are our students right now? Are they getting into it? Are they, you know, the novelty has definitely worn off for them at this point. So I, I'm just really curious, you know, I've heard stories of, you know, friends' kids, some of them are thriving, some of them are just struggling, especially I'm worried about our freshmen.
For sure, yeah. I mean, I, what I would say, any school year, you get into, you know, the excitement of the first couple of weeks, that wears off and you kind of get into the dog days, doesn't matter what form. So that being said, yeah, I think you're, you're pretty accurate with that. I think some kids are doing well and thriving, some kids are struggling, for sure. And that's kind of what our SST teams are working with too. They start to see students who are disengaging, they're on the phone and calling and trying to contact. And what can we do to get, you know, get back engaged? I don't know if anybody from our team kind of wants to, is there any other thoughts on that as far as the engagement?
Yeah, we are, student attendance is actually pretty good. And in terms of students coming to Zooms and things like that, it's actually pretty good. We do have, you know, like you said, we have, we have a lot of students thriving, but there are some students who are struggling to submit work in a timely fashion. So that is, you know, now what we're focusing on, reaching out to those kids and connecting them with all our various support mechanisms, be they academic or social emotional. So trying to grab those kids early here and bring them back into the fold.
But yes, I think this, because it's very different when the kids are actually physically in the classroom with the teacher as opposed to being so remote. I'm worried that once they start disengaging, it's going to be much harder to get them back in. And if they end up on a quarantine and they're out for two weeks, what do you do?
Yeah, we got to catch them early, and so that's what we're doing here. Yeah.
Thanks, Teresa. Any other questions or concerns from the board?
Michael, I have a question. I was at a meeting on Sunday, and I learned a little bit about some of, some of the home life situations of students. And I, I wanted to know if there had been any thought, and we talked about this a little bit, but I thought the rest of the board members might be interested to know. To think a little bit about having a space, maybe a gym set up for kids who wanted to be in a space where there's Wi-Fi, quiet, maybe a human being around somewhere, or maybe have access to counselors or social workers and such. If you had thought about maybe having a space like that for, for kids with particular needs?
Yeah, it's been part of the discussion, kind of a safe space, you know, just, yeah, come to school and safely socially distant, you know, use our Wi-Fi, what have you. Don't have anything to announce right now, but it has been under discussion for sure.
All right, thank you.
I had listened to, if that was the same meeting on Sunday I listened to, I, I think this has been something that we've just been, it's been a drumbeat for us since March to, to pay strict attention to this. So anything that you can do or anything that we can provide, we need to be creative with this, so. I'll just second, I'll just second what Kathleen just said.
Yeah, I, I had talked to, just so you know, Amy, I'd spoken to Michael about it, and I had explained the, the importance of the situation, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or thoughts from the board? And I'll talk about district goals really. Okay, so, and this is sort of separate. This will be a part of my report for all of this year, we'll just give an update on our district goals. So here we go. Okay, so the first goal is we will ensure academic support for all students. And really, the key question, how we're framing that out is, how do we know our practices are equitable for all students in terms of race, gender, ability level, socioeconomic status, sexual identity? So in a second, I'm going to show you a little bit of what our new department chair for EL and Equity is working on, kind of the framework that she's put together, she's done quite a bit of work in evaluation in terms of our district and terms of equity. So I'll talk about that in a second. One of the things we have been working on in terms of equity that doesn't always get discussed, you think equity, and again, you think about what we have up there, race, gender, ability level, et cetera, is technology equity. You know, we have, of course, in this model, we have got to ensure that we have equity in terms of students being able to access their education. And so whether that's a device or Wi-Fi or what have you, we've been working very hard, and by we, our technology department and our buildings, building teams as well, really trying to address as soon as possible any issues that students are having, whether it's tech issues or any issues with Wi-Fi. If students simply do not have Wi-Fi, you know, we are able to provide Wi-Fi hotspots. And again, that's not for, that's not for families where it's, you know, kind of slow or you've got three people on the Wi-Fi, so I could use another hotspot to, no. That's people who simply are not able to access their education. So that's one big piece of what we've been working on for the first part of this year, for sure. And of course, you all know our E groups, we've talked at length about that, and we've been trying to adapt that to a remote environment, making sure those support groups for students are there, and also our SST teams as well. But so one question that has been out there that we've been asked is how do we balance, this kind of gets to the equity part a little bit. How do we balance the current conversation around racial justice and law enforcement? Because we have, you know, students who are very, very passionate about the racial justice issue. And for some of them, it is very, very personal. We also have families that, students and families who are very closely connected to law enforcement, whether it's a family member or a loved one. I'm of the belief that you can be in favor of both. You can be in favor of, you know, improving racial justice and having appropriate effective law enforcement and support of those individuals. How do we have those conversations, right? So from our portion of our graduates, just kind of looking at some of those things, we want, one of the overarching goals is we want our students to be learned and thinkers, right? Some of the sub-bullet points I put there in italics, we want to be critical thinkers, right? This whole issue is, there is a lot to think about and a lot to, you know, figure out what, what is appropriate information, accurate information, and how can you make sense of this very, very complex situation and applying knowledge?
School board.
And also, another overarching goal is to be globally connected citizens. So we want them to be, our students to be civically engaged, right? We want to be engaged and, you know, making improvements, positive improvements to their community and culturally sensitive as well. So, you know, that, that's a balance, and I think our teachers are working on that. Want to make sure that, you know, in terms of the curriculum materials we have, the phrase that we use, we want it to be a window, so we want, and a mirror. We want students to be able to see different cultures, see out that window, and also see themselves reflected as well, and kind of have a balance there. So, you know, that's just something that we're thinking about and working on. And, you know, I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that or wants to add to that conversation, but.
Michael, we talked about this a lot yesterday, and basically, well, a few days ago, based on the letters that we received, one beautifully written letter from one, from a parent, and then one that we received from our students that was equally compelling, and the importance of finding that space where we can, we, as Americans, can find what we're willing to, to agree to and have that conversation, and the importance of maybe, of making sure that our teachers have the supports that they need. It's really, I think it's upon the board to make sure that, and the administration to make sure that our teachers, you know, really feel comfortable in this space. I mean, a lot of people don't, they can't have conversations with their family members, and here we're asking all of this all of a sudden. So I think we're going to have to ask our kids all to kind of, and we're all going to have to work through this together and be willing to work together. And kind of, maybe if we have to bring people in who can help us, And kind of, maybe if we have to bring people in who can help us with facilitate conversations and facilitate this idea of a convergent facilitation, where we can find out what, what are the core ideas that we agree to. And I think everyone has been talking about, we need to think instead of right and left, well, we're, you know, what can we agree to? So we had that conversation. I'm really glad that you've tied this back to our portrait of a graduate, because it, I mean, if there was any reason for us to, you know, to jump into this space, here it is. It's what we want to do anyway. So yeah, I'm excited, I'm excited about the opportunity and, and it's also, it's a, it's a big, it's a, it's a big brick to push uphill, but I think we can do it.
Yeah, these conversations are hard to have. Very definitely. It's easy to say the wrong thing, but again, we, it's something we're going to have to work on. It doesn't come easy, for sure. So.
Yeah.
If I could, I want to jump to the next slide to give you a sense of, this is sort of, so Gabrielle Devlin is our new department chair for EL, English Learners and Equity. It's kind of a two sides to her position. But this is where she's at. This is really the tip of the iceberg. I didn't want to overwhelm folks. But this is kind of where we're at right now, where she's working, Intro to D127 Equity Framework. And so that stage one is really, the goal is to identify and define common protocol, common language, common terms to use in equity discussions, to make sure we're all speaking the same language. Okay, there's definitely a need for that, I think, in the country, but certainly in our organization as well. Stage two would be that Equity Education Series, so addressing the immediate needs and educational goals of stakeholder groups. So finding that common, that foundational language, that foundational understandings in stage one, and then like figure out what are, what are the big needs? This is a big, big topic in terms of equity, right? What are the, what are the, the red hot topics we've got to address or issues we've got to address? So she's doing an assessment of our district right now. And then stage three, a needs assessment, kind of related, completing a needs assessment district-wide on systemic equity, right? And the asterisks there, those are planning underway right now, those three things kind of simultaneously. Ultimately, we'll do a full equity audit. That's kind of a big 360 view of our district. And then what that would lead to is what are our goals, what are specific goals and, you know, long-term goals as well? So it's a big topic. It's a big job. And there is much more to what Gabrielle is working on. I just grabbed this just to to dip our toes in the water a little bit. You're going to be hearing much more about that. So some really amazing work that's going on right now. But Gabrielle is new to our district. She's just getting to know us and our systems and our processes. So that work is ongoing. Okay, goal number two, supporting students' social emotional needs with appropriate interventions and mental health assistance. And again, the way we frame that out, how do we know that we're succeeding in terms of supporting social emotional health and climate and culture? And I think we've already discussed a little bit how important it is right now in a remote environment, supporting our students that are not with us every day and interacting with friends and interacting with, you know, their, their teachers and the, the staff that they love and love them so much. So the start of this year, just some quick bullet points, you know, we made the commitment, knowing kind of how it went in the spring. We wanted to make sure that our teachers, to start the year, were focusing on relationships, were focusing on connection. Content would be secondary. We really had to make sure our teachers, as much as possible in this very weird environment, are doing what they can to make connections with students. You know, it's, it's a weird thing to be, especially for a high school freshman, right? To be interacting via school, you've been doing school for about a decade and now it completely switches and it's all online, right? Got to make sure we've got relationships. That synchronous learning, there was a focus, definitely, you know, Tracy and her team made a very, very forceful push for synchronous learning. In other words, teachers and students talking together in real time. Again, to promote that connection. And we're going to talk about panoramata in a little bit. It is, and I'll, I'll mention this later in the discussion, it is a big part of our plans for SEL. So assisting our student support teams, monitoring the social emotional health of our students. It's really the, the main measure, the best measure we have to, to get a temperature check on the social emotional health of our students. Leading to appropriate interventions before they become more serious problems. Social emotional health, it is so, as you can imagine, it's very difficult. It's not like, you know, taking a math test and, you know, how kids are doing on the slow form. Some, it's difficult sometimes to know where students are at emotionally. And sometimes those things that kids are struggling, it comes out in negative ways, right? It comes out in behavior or attendance or poor grades. And that's fine. We can, you know, grab those kids and pull them in and try to fix the situation. But we'd like to approach it proactively before it gets to that point, you know, before grades become severely damaged or attendance issues start to happen. And then, you know, you've got a whole bunch of issues there. Students start not coming to school or discipline issues. And of course, that's a wide variety. You know, what discipline issues can be, can obviously be very destructive. So we'll talk about that in a minute, but that is a big piece of what our student support teams would like to use in order to support our students' social and emotional health. Number three, we talked about research-based professional development, supporting the attainment of individual and organizational roles. How do we support and evaluate our staff in a remote pandemic-affected learning situation that we've never been in before and, you know, completely upends all conceptions we have about supporting teachers and and evaluating them? Right now, I, you know, I think our, we have all of our teachers, all of our staff are superheroes, as Dr. Rascal likes, likes to say. But this group of our instructional coaches are just killing it. Absolutely amazing as far as supporting our teachers in how to do remote. And it's new for everybody. I'm just going to really quickly, this is a copy of one newsletter that they put out to our staff. I'll skim through it really quickly. So new features on Schoology. Giving tips on Schoology, Google assignment options. Reminding our teachers of our parent instructional materials website. Sometimes, as we have found out, things just don't want to work. Or there's a status page of all our systems. Is it working? Is it not? Viewing Google Drive files in Schoology. Kami assignments, Classkick. Again, these are tools, electronic tools our teachers use. The Real Hub, and I'll open that in a second. That's sort of their website that, that's the hub for all professional learning. And it just keeps getting bigger and bigger and more and more built out. So again, this is something that's open to all our teachers. There are actually parent resources as well, excuse me. And of course, just, you know, that's them and their Bitmojis. So not only, you know, website development or, you know, having things stored on a website, they are available and for, you know, one-on-one help, that's the idea. Helping teachers work through some of the stuff and, you know, this is my goal. This is what I want my students to do. How can I do it in a virtual environment? So they would, you know, make suggestions or help or what have you. So there, there really are not so secret weapons as far as professional. So thus far, like I had mentioned, we would update our goals every board meeting. So that's my update for our three goals. We'll have additional updates in a month. So do you have any questions on those? Well, hearing none, I will, hold on, let me get back to my tab here. Well, that would be the end of my report, except to say, we did have a, here we go. Sorry, my board book is hit on me for a minute there. We did have a FOIA request that was fulfilled. And that would be the end of my report.
Thank you, Michael. That was very informative. We learned a lot. At this point, we'd like to move on to item eight, our student board representative, representative reports. And we'd like to, William Charlie, welcome Charlie Lay from Grayslake North High School as our student representative this year, and Keegan Fitzgerald from Grayslake Central High School. Welcome. We are so glad to see students. We haven't seen you guys in a very long time. Hi, Charlie, Charles. And so who would like to go first and introduce themselves and tell us a little bit about what's going on? Charlie? Yeah, let's go.
My name is Charlie Lay. I'm a senior at North this year. I was a junior, well, one of the junior reps last year. And I'll just get right into, you know, of what's been going on. So band wise, we had band camp earlier this year. Social distance, social distancing, of course. And we got a lot done for that. Student council has been meeting online Zooms. We had an election, I think, a week or two ago. So we got named. We named all of our positions. Student council is helping plan the drive-in for homecoming. So we're going to set up the giant screen and kids are going to be able to pull up in cars and then watch the movie. And then we're also planning a food truck event for the week of homecoming. So we'll have different food trucks and they'll come to people's cars and take orders. Sports-wise, we've had our cross-country team start, they've had a couple meets. And then we're running with golf, tennis and volleyball as well.
Charlie, has your system hung up? Or, Michael, do we have, we have any system problem?
Can you hear me okay?
Oh, now we got you.
Now we got you. Yeah, okay. Have you completed your report? Or do you have anything else to tell us?
Can you hear me okay? Yeah, could you hear it?
Yes, yes, thank you. Thank you, thank you. I guess at this point, we're going to move on to Keegan. And thank you so much, Charles, for your report. Keegan Fitzgerald.
All right, so I'm Keegan Fitzgerald. I'm a senior at Grayslake Central. And yeah, I'll just get right into the report. So all of our sports teams have been doing pretty good. The girls' golf team, which is combined with North, they only have two losses. And every other team is actually undefeated in conference play. So that's boys and girls cross-country, girls tennis and boys golf. Our school activities, so the clubs are just starting up and they're all getting meetings online. Our student council brought back the Market Day food event. So raising money through the Market Day. I know a lot of people were excited for the chicken steaks or something like that. I was supposed to advertise that. Like Charlie said, we are also planning a drive-in. Our homecoming is a little bit later, so we're not doing it on the week of homecoming. We're actually planning it for this coming Friday. So if you guys could spread the word, that would be really helpful. And then, yeah, our sports contact days are getting started. So I know a lot of my friends are excited about that.
All right, Charlie, was there anything else? Want to make sure that we didn't, you know, jump past you. Your sound was lagging a little bit. That was all, you locked up just for maybe a couple of seconds, but.
I didn't get my, my Chrome, but I tried rejoining on a different device. I don't want to hold anybody up, so we can just get to it next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir.
I'm sorry if I ran past you, Charlie. I was not sure what was going on there. Do any board members have questions from our student representatives this year? Are we good? Yeah. Okay, very thorough reports. Thank you. And I look forward to seeing you guys throughout the next few months and have lots of fun and keep working hard and getting good information for us to think about. It's great. Okay, I'm now going to move on to item nine, public participation. We are going to open up our floor to public participation. Each person has three minutes to speak. At this point, a little, a fine point of public participation is that the, the board listens, we take information in. And we do not, you know, provide feedback at this time. Our goal is to speak with one voice. And so please give us your name and our superintendent, or I will get back to you. So with that, Michael, I'm going to hand it over to you to see who is interested in, in participation.
Right, thanks. So if you're interested in speaking to the board, if you could, if you're on a device, a Zoom device, as opposed to dialing in just with a phone, if you could, like raise your hand or whatever, it just kind of makes things a little easier. Everybody raises their hand, we'll just go in order if you'd like to speak. And I'm scanning the participants just to make sure I'm not missing anybody. And if you're not familiar with how to do that, you click on participants, then you click on raise your hand. Or reactions? I'm not seeing anyone, but I want to make sure people have time. Oh, okay, Mr. Leahy, hold on one second.
Yes.
Yes, we do. Mr. Leahy.
Great.
You, I believe are unmuted, so you are, you're on.
Thanks, sir. Brian Leahy, 1833 Bellhaven. I spoke last month. Been watching the meetings for the last couple of months now. And obviously, I still want the schools to be open. And I think if you just look at Charles's report that he just gave on his district-issued Chromebook, I think that gives you a sense of some of the challenges with online and e-learning. We need to open the school and get our kids back in class. I don't understand how we have a plan set up so that we're supposed to be opening a month from now, yet we are just now starting to have a task force to get some feedback from parents and people in the community. That, to me, that should have been done a long time ago. It's nice that we're doing it now, but it should have been done a long time ago. You know, I mentioned last time that I worked at a bank and my people have been working throughout this entire endeavor. And Jim Fitzgerald has been, is the CEO of a company that has manufacturing plants in China and United States. They've kept operating throughout this entire endeavor. If you have a task force and don't include Jim on that task force, then it's just a clear sign that the administration and the board is more interested in finding out how not to keep the school open than how to open the school. It's time to get the school open. It's time to get some of our kids in. And I'd love to see a statistic on the hybrid model. We talk about a hybrid model. None of us parents think that we're in a hybrid model right now because our kids are at home every single day. Missing out on their senior year, missing out on their freshman year. There is so much learning that takes place, not from the teacher and not from the interaction on a Chromebook. It happens through the interactions of people. You know, how do we teach people to be good people in society if we don't have them together so they can interact with each other? So I'm just, I'm preaching to the choir. I've been saying this for the last three months, but thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is, it looks like we have someone else, Tammy?
Yes, Ms. Butt-Villas. I always feel like I'm messing up your life. I'm sorry.
It's easy. It's just, it's just like it says, Butt-Villas.
Okay, my apologies.
Hi, everybody. I'm Tammy Butt-Villas, mother of two central boys. And the last time I spoke here, I mentioned I was a high school teacher. But what I didn't mention was that I teach at Loyola Academy in Willmet. And as many of you know from the news, we started with a hybrid. With a specific hybrid plan. After seven instructional days, we closed for two weeks because of a COVID situation. And during that time, there was a lot learned. And when we reopened, we had a brand-new hybrid situation scheduled for the teachers. So it's been successful for two weeks so far. And it was a necessary change for the safety of our students and faculty. I have been on three different teaching schedules in a month. So teachers can do this. There's no planning needed to go from e-learning to hybrid. What I mean by that is What I mean by that is it has to be done. We get it done because it's what we do as teachers. I just would like to offer to anybody on the board, anybody, to share some of what we learned, where we failed in our first hybrid situation, and how we adjusted with flexibility and positivity, which is also my teaching philosophy. So I would love to share some of the changes we made that really made, are making this possible right now. In a good, positive way. I mean, I think that we can do this. I just think we need to take opportunities from other schools who have failed. And I'm offering to be one of those failures to help in any possible way that I can. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Tammy. Are there any other participants this evening?
Hi. This is Jim Fitzgerald. I don't know if you can hear me. I can't find the raise your hand.
You're good, you're good, go.
Okay, great. So appreciate Brian Leahy's strong endorsement of me. For the record, I did volunteer by way of the email. And I'm sure you had a lot of other community citizens that volunteered as well. Would be happy to share some of the work-related experience if they could be helpful to your task forces. The comments that, the real comments that I want to share, first of all, I want to acknowledge that the board didn't create this pandemic. You were handed the problem and, and challenged to find solutions and volunteered to serve in this role at whatever point you joined the board. And appreciate your willingness to do it. Having been a board member as well, I can tell you that at no point in any of my board experiences was I faced with what you're, you're asked to deal with right now. So I want to acknowledge that in some respects, you're as ill-equipped as anybody else is anywhere because it's an unprecedented event. And I just want to encourage you to continue to challenge even your own conventional thoughts, challenge your own paradigms, challenge your own natural tendencies and your own experiences, and accept that it is as new for you as it is for your parents, as it is for your students, and, and to embrace the, the opportunity that you have to kind of work through it as a team, but solicit support as well. So I just want to offer that up. My last comment is just really more of a request. And Mickle, I'm not sure if it's just for you or, or if it's for the board. But I have had a chance to have a couple of conversations with Brian Mo about one disappointment that I do have. And you heard my son Keegan speak earlier. He's one of those fall athletes. And unfortunately, I'm one of those fall parents that has not had the opportunity to watch him play in any of those golf matches during his senior year. And I'm, I'm grateful that he's back. Given the choice of him not participating at all, or his parents not getting the chance to see him compete in his senior year, of course, we would choose to have him participate. But the, the conference that we are a part of made a decision to eliminate spectators at all, at all fall sports events. That's our players going to public golf courses where I could actually play in the group in front of him if I wanted, but I couldn't walk alongside or behind him if I just wanted to be a parent. And Brian did a great job of explaining some of the challenges that the conference saw in allowing spectators. But other conferences have dealt with that. And, and as a, what I'd like you to appreciate as a parent is my disappointment when my son and his teammates, the kids from North and others, are going to non-conference events. Our parents are still adhering to those guidelines and their opponents have their, have their parents there as spectators. It just seems like an unfair outcome for these kids that have already lost so much. So the request that I have, Mickle, is the season's running out of time. As Brian knows, I've, I've, you know, approached him on several occasions to, to see if there was any way to get that decision reversed. He's got a handful of matches left in his senior year, as do our players at North and, and likely the tennis players and the, and the cross country players. I'd really like the, your role with the athletic directors and the NLCC board to find a way to allow these outdoor events to reconsider that decision before it's too late for our athletes. So thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do we have any other participants?
I am not seeing any at the moment, but I want to give a little space here. And I'm not seeing anybody else, so.
Okay.
I think we're done with public participation. Thank you.
Okay, yes, thank you, everyone. Okay, we will now end public participation. Is there a need to go into closed session?
Not, not this one, the second one, we will.
Okay, all right, we're going to move on to continuing business. Coronavirus update, did you have anything additional you'd like to add?
No, I kind of front-loaded that one with the superintendent's report, so.
Okay.
Moving on.
Okay, Board of Education retreat discussion. We have a retreat.
All right, so this is, just need some feedback, need the board to hopefully come to some consensus on how we want to do this. We have our retreat scheduled through IASB on October 1st. Sent individual emails to the board, just what is everybody's preference, whether it's virtual or in-person or what have you. So we, we can't, long story short, some board members were okay with in-person. Some board members were more comfortable with remote. We can do, and I asked our, our trainers, we can do a hybrid, so to speak. So we could have, you know, a couple of board members on the screen here and the rest of the board members here, or, you know, in the room. That's probably not ideal, just it gets a little crazy with that. So I just wondered what the board would like to do because I think tomorrow, Kathleen, or maybe Monday? I can't remember. We're going to be talking with our trainer.
Yeah, I think it's Tuesday now.
Tuesday, okay. So I guess my question for the board is, is, is there a consensus? Can we come to a consensus on either remote or in-person? Or should we look toward, if we can't, if we can't, can we do a hybrid? What do you guys think?
I was in favor of being in-person, but I certainly wouldn't want to stop the retreat from happening if, if doing it remotely would be the, the option. And so I'm, I'm very flexible about that.
Thanks, Ellen.
Okay. We, I know that we had one board member that did not want to have a retreat this year. And I just learned that we have another board member who has a board, has parent-teacher conferences on October 1st. So we have two board members that are out at this point. Should we look at another time? Perhaps look at another time, push it back a little bit?
We have one, one board member that just can't make it.
If we have one board member who can't make it, I think that's problematic.
Yeah.
I mean, we've had, I'm sorry, Amy, go ahead.
I mean, we, we have done it without a board member, but that's usually because they haven't, they've chosen not to come. But if we know of a conflict in advance, I'm, our, our board tries to, these are retreats in, in the effort of all of us working together. And given that we are, the intent is that we're all doing this together. So I wouldn't want to have somebody not be able to make it because, certainly because of they're doing parent-teacher conferences.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Let's see, who else do we have? Aaron, do you have any thoughts? Aaron, are you there?
Yeah, I'm having trouble unmuting, sorry. I, I'm with Amy, I agree that if, we know that there's a significant conflict. But I know we also have kind of the yin and the yang of people who are in high-risk situations. And I work retail, you know, so I am, I, those are two people that should not be in the same room together. So, you know, I think that that's a consideration too, that we have to, you know, even though it's only seven of us, we already have that. So I'm good with moving it and I'm good with being on Zoom. And if me being on Zoom allows other people to be in-person, I'm totally with, good with that.
You know, thank you so much for that, for offering that, Aaron. That is, that's an interesting idea for us to think about. It seems to me that we're moving towards pushing it back at this point, Mickle. And so we can, we can talk about that maybe tomorrow. But I think that's where we've landed. Does anyone have a different point of view that we haven't heard? Or would like to offer something that we haven't heard?
Just, just a note, a little bird next to me told me that as far as our board governance, and I know it's not the most important thing, we have to do it by June 30th, so.
June 30th of next year?
Yes. To kind of keep on our same, as far as the board goes, your same track as far as the board governance award and things like that, so.
I think, I think we'll be fine. I'm not going to worry about that right now.
If that was a worry.
Okay.
All right, 30th next year sounds wonderful.
Yeah, we'll have it.
We want to get everyone to that and open up and do all the things.
All righty, well.
I'm sorry.
No, it's good, I, I think we're all feeling like that. We're hoping all to be together by then, but, okay, so we'll have a conversation about that tomorrow. We'll move on. See, the IASB resolution, I just wanted to bring you up to date. Our resolution this year was not adopted. It was not adopted because they wanted the word "infrastructure" to be within the resolution paragraph itself. I didn't realize that there was an opportunity to amend that on the fly. Didn't know that. I'm offering this to you now as an insight. And so next year, we can, we'll know when we go back. So we have two options at this point. We can update our language and go back in next year. Or if someone wants to be bold, we can take our language as is and march into the delegate assembly Zoom room in November and just present it. So if anyone wants that opportunity, they can do it. If not, we can wait until next year. I'm in no hurry. The, looks like interest rates are going to be, the Fed's ever going to be at 0% for quite some time. So there's, we can wait a little bit. But does anyone have any thoughts? Hearing none and hearing no enthusiasm for marching into the delegate assembly, we will do this again next year. Okay, thank you, everyone. Then we're going to move on to our 11D panorama. Mickle, Amy, did you have some thoughts?
Unmute here, yeah. Amy, if you don't mind, I've got, do you mind if I say a couple words? Okay, thanks. So, all right, panorama. Just to give a little bit of context, for the past year or so, we've been having discussions on the panorama software. And it's led to some really good discussions, actually, on data privacy. And it's ultimately resulted in a completely new data privacy policy that's much stronger and certainly more up-to-date. So that's a good thing. The intent in general, last year, I believe, is to continue the discussion about that software at PQ, second semester. But of course, COVID had other ideas. And, you know, that was the focus. And frankly, panorama, as far as the discussion, fell off the radar until this year. And we had a discussion at our last PP, PQ, and the committee requested some information on validity and the cultural sensitivity of some of the items. We've tried to provide that as, as much as we could to you. The issue is this, and this is where COVID kind of messes us up again. If we're going to continue to use the program, we've got to pay the bill, right? And normally, that's done over the summer and presumably, we would have had more time for a discussion. But of course, other things were sort of on our minds. But unfortunately, the, the bill has come due. We need to know if we're going to continue to use that program. So just my statement on panorama is this, we've had numerous discussions on it. Really bluntly, we want to use this program as it's designed. Our SST teams find it highly useful for having conversations about groups of students and monitoring SEL, as I've kind of mentioned a little bit earlier in the evening, SEL of our students, social emotional learning and social emotional health of our students. And it's a tool, that's really all it is. But it's a big tool in our, in their toolbox, right? And this is a group of people, our social workers, our counselors, our deans, our wellness coordinators, school psychologists, our principals, our associate principals, who have dedicated their lives to this kind of work, as you know. Not telling you anything you don't know. All these people are highly credentialed, they're highly intelligent, they're creative, they're caring, they're, they're highly trustworthy with all manner of sensitive data. And I, I believe strongly, they would die before doing something that, in their professional opinions, would hurt a kid, right? So they're the ones that, that know how to have conversations with students on really sensitive topics. Every sensitive subject you can imagine. And do what's best for kids. They, they know full well how to be sensitive to students' race and gender identity, sexual identity, socioeconomic status. I hope that's not a concern with our, with our board, I don't think it is. But that's what we hire those folks for, and that's why we trust them with really sensitive situations, the most sensitive situations, frankly, that we deal with. So when we talk about social emotional learning, as we've noted, it's a district goal. This is the tool we want to use. And when we talk about equity, it's going to be a tool that I think can be very, very helpful for us. There really isn't another one like this. And we want to use it to identify students who are struggling. As I had mentioned before, we learn about those struggles in other ways, maybe more negative ways. Discipline issues, attendance issues, failing grades, and worse. Want to identify those issues and provide support before they become bigger, you know, and more destructive, of course. I was asked if the product would be worthwhile without the survey component. And it works, it's functional, it's not bad, but it's not what we want to use it for. It really isn't. What makes the tool powerful is that whole package. So we don't recommend purchasing kind of the scaled-down version. So in closing, our, our request and our recommendation very respectfully is for the board to approve the full package for the benefit of our students.
Thank you, Douglas. Thank you, Mickle. Are there any other thoughts?
I, I feel confident with what our staff, the, the drive of our staff and the, the conversations that they bring to the table. And certainly what, I, I can name some of the.
Amy, I can't hear you. Can the other board members hear you?
Is that better? Is that better?
Thank you.
Sorry. I, I was going to say that I have confidence in the staff and their, in their, 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 their willingness to work with this and their, 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 what they want to use the data for and what they, why they want to use it. Some of the conversations that were from last week and even before that. Jenny, for instance, and, and the work that she's doing and others as well. Very, very compelling arguments for this. I, I don't have a, I don't have any concerns about that. Panorama itself and the information we get from panorama, that isn't very compelling to me. Like, the, the data sheets and their, their preliminary reports are not as strong. It's just weaker material to me when I read through it. So while the information that they are using and how they're using it might be all very good, the, the information that we receive and see just isn't, to me, very strong. So it, it does help to hear from the staff about how they're using it. But the information that I see from panorama itself just doesn't strike as a very, just in and of itself, as a very strong case. Their reliability and validity, common, their preliminary report from 2016 doesn't, doesn't offer a very compelling case. I'm just, it just doesn't, not for me.
Thank you, Amy. Are there any other?
So this is Douglas. You know, through, through the years, you know, when the administration has good reasons for supporting a tool or textbook or anything else, I think it's the board's, you know, right to ask questions. And we have asked questions for months on this. I don't think we're privacy experts, and I honestly, I think we're, this is, it's, it's good to have a discussion on grid, but, but I think we're getting in the weeds. And I don't think this is the board's job to really. getting in the weeds. Um, and I don't think this is the board's job to really micromanage. So, um, I support the administration's decision.
I'll quickly echo that sentiment. I'm confident that the district has kind of done their due diligence to do all that they can to address the, the questions that we've had over the months. Um, so I agree with this.
I, I will also, uh, agree with that and echo, uh, Douglas and Jay's comments. These are the experts, and if it's useful to them and makes their jobs even a little bit easier, let's go for it.
Any other thoughts? Aaron? Russell? Okay. All righty, I, I've spoken a lot about this. After looking at the data that the administration presented, um, I, I have no doubt that our, our staff, um, you know, they're very professional, care about kids, want to do everything right. I have, I would not place an argument there ever. Uh, I have a hundred percent, um, I, I think that they, they do an outstanding job. So I, I do not want to be, I will not argue on that point. Um, what I, what I am seeing, um, having started a software integration company, working with Fortune 500 businesses, database integration firm, um, having worked, uh, to help establish and support the state of Illinois's reporting system around violent preventable deaths and overdose deaths, which is now run out of Northwestern Feinberg School of Medicine and Public Policy. And I have spent hours there with professionals looking over sensitive data and thinking about how to keep that information safe. Um, I do have a perspective that's a little bit different. And I, I understand that puts me at odds with my colleagues, but I think it's important as a governance board, um, that we are, that we each come with our strengths. And, um, so what worries me about this system is that it does not seem to have been, from the information that I receive, does not seem to have been subjected to a rigorous academic, um, an independent review, um, nor does it demonstrate to me that we takes our, our, nor does it demonstrate to me that it takes our students' personally identifiable information seriously. Students know that their data can be hacked and it can be monetized. If you accept the premise that information on private servers, um, may, may not be safe, as I do. And if you accept the premise that state and federal policies protecting children's personal data are weak, which I do, evidence in our board having to find by ourselves and then writing the first policy in the state of Illinois to protect children's, uh, data here at this level with no framework, policy framework at the state or national level to support our work, then you will understand why I do not support panorama. I support the, uh, our sis, our, our professionals having access to a relational database. Uh, personally, I would be tearing my hair out working in a siloed environment. I wouldn't stand for it. I can't believe they have all these years, but okay. Um, I also think it's important that we have access to, um, climate survey. We do have that now, um, through the five essentials. I was out there looking at that yesterday. It's on our school report card, offers quite a bit of information. That information does not cost us anything. So, but I understand the panorama provides both of these things and it does it efficiently and effectively. I am willing, um, and I want the board to know that I'm willing, um, to, to purchase Pomerano Panorama for its relational database capacity. And, um, and I think that would offer a lot. I cannot take that extra step knowing what I know. And so I'm going to respectfully, um, uh, say no to this software. However, as I have demonstrated, um, throughout the five years on this board, that I will continue to support a data safe, peer reviewed, and human centered approach to student well-being. And that's my report on that. Uh, anyone else have anything else to say? Then we will move along to item 12, committee reports. Facilities and finance.
Real quick before we move on, so what are our next steps here? Do we need a vote on this?
We will be voting on it later. Yes. We're, we're done, we're done with our discussion component.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, item 12, committee reports, facilities and finance. Douglas?
Okay. Um, sorry, we had our, getting rid, getting used to the new board book. Um, so we're going to be, we're going to be voting on the budget tonight, obviously. Uh, we also went over solar update. I know Russ, you were kind of waiting for that. So, you know, if you want to get a copy of that or if you need more information.
Good. I met with Abe. All updated.
Okay. Um, we talked a little bit about the contract, the teacher's contract. Um, and we'll discuss that tonight as well. So that's about it.
Yeah. Thank you, Douglas. Okay. Programming policy and personnel. Amy?
Sorry, I'm coming back. Uh, let's see, we talked about, um, panorama. We talked about, um, the SATs being given at the school and coming out of that, we had a, a pretty rigorous discussion about SATs in general and the requirement at the state level. Um, let's see, we talked about, um, SROs, um, translation services, and, um, we also had discussions of our policy review, which you'll see in your packet tonight, um, personnel, uh, students being released during, um, school hours, um, and a whole bunch of things on community relations. And then we also have on, for agreements for our, on the, on tonight, we have our memorandum of agreement for performance evaluations, which we'll be, um, going over tonight. So.
Okay. Thank you so much, Amy. And now to the Illinois Association School Board, Jonathan.
All right. Uh, so Kathleen mentioned this earlier, but next week on the 24th at 1:00 PM, there is that webinar. So would highly recommend that everyone kind of attends that, listens in. It's going to be a great discussion. Uh, if you need info on how to get registered for that, contact Jenny or get in contact with me or anyone else on the board will, will help you out. And then earlier this afternoon, really hot off the presses, uh, we got the resolution committee report. So I haven't had a chance to look through that myself, but I would recommend everyone on the board kind of taking care of that as some of the things that we'll be discussing at the delegate assembly, uh, in November. And that's what I got for you.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Jonathan. And we're going to move on to CDO. Hal?
Yeah. Um, the last meeting was, uh, to approve the budget for the year and discussion on, um, whether it's hybrid or in person. And those decisions for the CDO group are even more complicated than they are for, for us and the, the mainstream students. Um, so my heart goes out to all of those people there to work through whose, um, whose job is to figure out what's best for the, the neediest among our, of our students. So, but that, that's really more of a comment and then the budgetary, um, meeting, part of the meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Hal. And that wraps up our committee reports for this evening, and we're going to move on to item 13, new business, uh, 2020, 2021 budget adoption. Board action is requested. Douglas, this is a lot, but off you go.
Okay. So, um, I move the board of education adopt the 2021 budget as discussed and recommended by the F and F committee for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2020 and ending July's, June 30th, 2021. The blood, the budget was placed on file for public inspection from August 14th, 2020, uh, sorry, um, to the end of the workday on September 17th, 2020 at the district office on the district website located 400 North Lake Street, Grayslake, Illinois between the hours of 7:00 AM and 3:30 PM. And the required public hearings of said, said budget was held at 6:45 on September 17th, 2020, prior to this regular board of education meeting in this school district in room 1500, 400 North Lake Street, Grayslake, Illinois. Legos was placed in the newspaper.
All right. Well, thank you. I need a, thank you, Douglas. Uh, I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Um, I just have to say, you know, thank you for Abe and the administration. Abe, again, jumped in, you know, running and, and just took, took hold of the reins. So, so nice job.
Thank you. And also Douglas, thank you and your, your team for, um, making that transition. Um, you know, you were in there and, uh, you made it happen. So we're, we're here at the end of the year. So thank to all, thank you to all of you guys for the incredible work you've done this year. Um, roll call vote please, Jenny.
Mr. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mrs. Conlon-Mossick?
Yes.
Mrs. Knutson-Strack?
Yes.
Mr. Nergi?
Yes.
Mr. Reynoso?
Yes.
Mr. Sloan?
Yes.
Ms. Westfall?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Um, we're going to move on to 12, 13B, Grayslake Central High School donations recommendation. Board action is requested. Douglas?
I'm sorry. I move the board of education accept the following donations as presented, as presented.
Okay. Good enough. I need a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote please, Jenny.
Mrs. Conlon-Mossick?
Yes.
Mrs. Knutson-Strack?
Yes.
Mr. Nergi?
Yes.
Mr. Reynoso?
Yes.
Mr. Sloan?
Yes.
Ms. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Thank you, Jenny. Motion carries. Uh, 13C, recommendation for transportation contract addendum. Uh, board action is requested. Douglas?
Yes. Thank you, Kathy. I move the board of education approve the Durham transportation contract addendum as discussed at F and F and presented.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote please, Jenny.
Mrs. Knutson-Strack?
Yes.
Mr. Nergi?
Yes.
Mr. Reynoso?
Yes.
Mr. Sloan?
Yes.
Ms. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mrs. Conlon-Mossick?
Yes. Motion carries. 13D, 2021 war memorandum of agreement, performance evaluation. Board action is requested. Amy?
We may have skipped one.
Did we skip one? Oh, I skipped one. I'm sorry. See. Okay. 13C. Thank you so much, guys. Uh, recommendation for transportation contract addendum. Board action is requested. Douglas?
We just did that one. I'm sorry. The panorama one?
Run D.
I'm sorry. Uh, that was the one that I just did. D. 2021 memorandum of agreement, performance evaluations. Did we miss something?
Yeah, D is a panorama.
You may have panorama. Yeah, the copy is maybe different.
I do not have that, um, here, but I could imagine what it is. So we will, we will punt. Uh, D, um.
Payment approval of pam- panorama.
Thank you. Um, board action is requested. Am, is that Amy or is that, that's Douglas?
Douglas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I move the board of education approve the payment for the 2021 school year to pamro- panorama as discussed.
Okay. Uh, I need a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
So I would, if this had been amended, I would have considered this more for having just the relation, relational database. But, um, as a whole, um, given my overall concerns, I'll be voting no.
Thank you, Amy. Um, is there any other discussion? No. Uh, given my concerns and the lack of information that was provided by panorama, um, I will be voting no on this too.
We have to do a roll call vote.
Okay. Uh, roll call vote please, Jenny.
Mr. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mrs. Conlon-Mossick?
No.
Mrs. Knutson-Strack?
No.
Mr. Nergi?
Yes.
Mr. Reynoso?
Yes.
Mr. Sloan?
Yes.
Ms. Westfall?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now we will move on to E. I think this is E now. Uh, 2021 memorandum of agreement, performance evaluation. Board action is requested. Amy?
I move the board of education approve the 2020, 2021 memorandum, memorandum of understanding in regard to the 2020, 2021 evaluations as agreed upon between District 2127 and the GEA as discussed and recommended by the P Cube committee.
Thank you, Amy. I need a second.
Biggest of seconds.
Is there any discussion? Hearing, hearing none. Roll call vote please, Jenny.
Ms. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Sloan?
Yes.
Mr. Reynoso? Mr. Nergi?
Yes.
Mrs. Knutson-Strack?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon-Mossick?
Yes.
Mr. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Jenny. Motion, motion carries.
It was the biggest of sec, uh, yeses, but I felt like the joke was already made.
All righty. Okay. We're moving on. Uh, board policy, first reading. Um, no board action is requested. Amy, do you have any, uh, information for us? Any thoughts? Are we, I can't hear you. You're on mute.
I am on mute. I was just going back to the-
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to rush you.
It's okay. Can you repeat? Sorry, I just lost the page.
It's okay. It's okay. We're having, we're going through that this evening. And it's C, D, E, F. I believe it's F. E, R, F.
It's not clear by the agenda what needs to be done, honestly.
No, I know. Well, we, we're not, we're on two different tonight, not one. So it's okay. Um, so, right. So the, the first reading tonight, yeah. So we just have, um, uh, just what I had mentioned before, sorry. Um, the, um, student release during student hours, the public relations, the, the community relations. And, um, there's some slight, um, adjustments to the ironically pandemic preparedness and management recovery. So.
Thank you so much, Amy. And for anyone listening in, we're dealing with a new system tonight and, uh, breaking it in. I think we've been doing pretty well.
Yeah.
Um, generally speaking, it could be much worse. Uh, but yes, uh, behind the scenes, there's lots of interesting things going on tonight. Okay. We're going to move on to item 14, topics for future committee and board meetings and next meeting reminders. And Jenny, I want to thank you so much for putting in the, the dates. Those are fantastic. Uh, does anyone else have anything that they want to, to discuss?
I never really got a conclusion on whatever happened at Happiness, uh, program that got shot down. I'd like to find out what the conclusion was with that. Maybe I missed that because I wasn't at the last two meetings.
Okay. Should we bring that up in committee for a discussion or, or to the board for discussion?
Whatever.
Okay.
I have heard from them, but I shut them down. Uh, I directed it towards Michael and Danielle and Tracy, but I never heard what came out of that. And it's interesting-
And it's interesting to me. I never heard exactly what happened to the point.
Well, we haven't had a board level discussion on it since. So I'll discuss it with Michael and we will get back to you as to where the best place to have that is. Anything else?
Michael, we didn't really stress what I'm hearing about is the sports. Do we have anything to add on the sports? You said something about we might talk about that in Super Tennis Report, maybe next time or...
Yeah, just, I mean, all I wanted to say about sports is, and as you know, it's governed by IHSA and ISBE. And we're doing what we can, what we're allowed to do. So, and I know you know that, you know, sometimes there's a misconception that, you know, somehow we're holding football back. We're not, we're not allowed to compete in football and certain sports. So we are pretty much maxing out the limit of what we're allowed to do. Yeah.
And can you answer, or Kathleen or Brian, Mr. Fitzgerald's question?
Yeah, we'll address it. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I would like to know the answer to that.
And I want to add a similar question to that because it popped in my head is, are there state finals in these sports that we're running right now? And if so, what is the IHSA recommendations for regionals, sectionals, and state?
Okay.
I'll find the answers to that and we'll address it. Yep.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. Are there any other thoughts or... Okay, there's one, Michael, maybe you can help me with this. But there was one item that we were supposed to have on here, which was EdRed. Did we, I don't think we discussed that. I just wanted to mention, this is kind of something I've been, I care very much about, which is policy. All you people sitting over in public policy know what a policy, yeah, I'm very interested in this. And so we have signed up with EdRed. We're working with them. We're thinking, they have monthly meetings. They have breakout meetings. They have some in, you know, computer software policy that they're working on that might be of interest to us and other things. And so we'll start getting that information out to you. They have a monthly meeting. If any, you know, I'm going to try to attend. If other people, everyone is welcome to attend. And I was thinking that maybe we would want to have a section under Committee Reports where we can start kind of working on thinking about the board being, you know, not just a board that thinks about policy, but actually move some of these policy ideas forward. So if that's something you're interested in having it on a committee report, we can do that, too. But just give me some feedback on that and we can think about that together, maybe in PQ.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would like to see that, for sure. We've done a lot of work in, at different levels in policy, the state, county, and local levels. So I think that would be a good idea. And as soon as we can start getting that EdRed stuff kind of coming through to us, too, that would be really great. I know you, I know you've already been forwarding some things, Seth, which is awesome. Thank you so much. So, yeah, no, I think it's all really good. You know, we, we're all coming to this with lots of our own business and work and governmental experience. So just bringing it all to bear is really important. So, yeah, it's great. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Thank you. And anyone else have any thoughts on EdRed? Again, it's going to be open to everyone and we'll be pushing the information out to everyone so we can develop as a governance team together. Does anyone else have anything else that they would like to add to a future agenda for us to consider? I know you're all exhausted. We will think a little bit more about when we're going to have our retreat and make sure we can get everyone there. And I'm really glad that we came to that decision. Actually, it was the only decision we could come to, but I'm glad we came to it together. At this point, I'm going to move on. Next item is Closed Session. And Board Action is Requested. The Board has need to enter into Closed Session as allowed under State Code for matters pertaining to negotiations. I need a second.
Kathleen, I'm sorry, can I, we also need to add a personnel, just for the record, negotiations and a personnel issue. I'm sorry.
For matters pertaining to negotiations and personnel, that is not in my copy.
Sorry.
Okay. Okay, no problem. So I need a, thank you, Michael. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please, Jenny.
Mr. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mrs. Conlon-Mossick?
Yes.
Mrs. Knudsen-Strack?
Yes.
Mr. Reynoso?
Yes.
Ms. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Sloan?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. There will be no action coming out of Closed Session. For those that are not, will not be joining us in our Closed Session meeting, I would like to say good night to you now. But Michael, I think you have a way of saying good night to folks. Would you like to take it from here?
Right, yeah. Just give people a couple of minutes to leave the room.